Get us through the agenda. We do want to recognize and celebrate Black History and Futures Month. And, uh, but please get us started on the agenda.
Going to item three, which is actions on special orders of the day. Starting with item 3.1, we have adopted a resolution in celebration of Black History and Futures Month in February 2025 by honoring Black changemakers in the city of Oakland working towards a transformative future that seeks to dismantle oppressive systems and advance true liberation, safety, and opportunities in our community. And I don't have any speakers on this item.
Don't have any speakers on this item? Madam Clerk, no? Members of the... I know there was a...
Actually, we do have two speakers, it looks like.
Go ahead and call the speakers.
Uh, through the chair, I think you should present first.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you all for being here today. I think we all recognize that, uh, with the federal experiences that we're having, no matter where you stand on the political spectrum, there are some critical things that are under attack right now, which is why this year's Black History and Black Futures commemoration of so many local leaders is critical, because we in Oakland understand the importance of diversity, but we also understand in this city, the work that so many African-Americans have done to make Oakland better for not just Black people, but for everyone. And so I'm happy to co-sponsor this piece of legislation with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Houston, and our interim mayor, Kevin Jenkins. And I would like the opportunity for everyone that's acknowledged someone for the work that they've done in their district, to have those individuals recognize them today. So we can start with the mayor, if the mayor is available. If not, then we can move on to our District One honoree. I ask that we be brief in our comments and let our honorees have the majority of our speaking time. And so if we could go ahead and get started with honoring these amazing, beautiful people who've come here today, that would be amazing.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, I asked a group of young folks who we should honor for this award, and unanimously, they all said at the same time, "Mr. Price." Let's give him a hand. Mr. Price is, among many other things, the principal of Oakland Tech High School. Let's go Bulldogs, go Bulldogs. And, uh, there is no better way to honor and love the city of Oakland than to honor and love our young people. And this man has done an amazing job of taking care of our young folks, of leading them, of showing them the way to be better citizens. And I cannot thank you enough for all you've done for my own kids and for all the kids in the city of Oakland. So that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna... Happy to give you this proclamation. Come on up, sir.
Members of the council, let's all go down.
Through the chair, if we can have the honorees come up to the middle of the dais. Um, there is a portable microphone at the front, so you can turn to face the public. If all council members and their honorees can come to the... To the front of the chamber, please.
Um, hello? First and foremost, I want to thank God for the opportunity to wake up and be here today. Growing up in Oakland and in this world has taught me that tomorrow isn't promised, and I'm thankful for every day that I wake up as a result. I also want to thank the current esteemed mayor, who's not here. Uh, oh, Mr. Jenkins, I'm sorry. Your cousin sends his regard, Mr. Williams, at Oakland Tech. At any rate, I also want to thank our current esteemed mayor of the council and all of our esteemed council members, especially Councilmember Anger, for taking the time to recognize me as a community member and resident of District One that has given the last 25 years of his life to educating the youth of Oakland. It's weird being given this award at this moment in time, because the work is not done. And I'm still... And there's still much more work to do.
I see you, my proposed response, and then his last response is underneath.
It's all good, yeah, yeah.
Okay, y'all, take a look at it in a minute.
I don't know where you've been, but hello. At any rate, um, yeah, and still I'm honored, as it validates some of the choices I made in my life as a young person growing up in the town. And being given the opportunity to speak today, I have to give thanks to my parents who are here. It's a blessing, who instilled in me a love for learning and a desire to serve others in the community through their words and actions. I want to thank my brothers, one of whom is here, for protecting me as I made my way through Oakland and its public schools. It wasn't always easy, for sure, for different reasons. I also want to thank all of the teachers and educators I had growing up for being patient and loving with a wayward young man. You wouldn't believe that I would have been a principal in high school all those years ago. I also want to thank the current members of the education community I'm part of. The reality is, I'm one man, and I cannot do it all myself. It takes a village and a team, and I have that at Oakland Tech. I'm thankful for the wonderful students, teachers, and families that I work with. Lastly, I want to thank my partner, Mercy, and my son, Emile, and my daughter, Naomi, for supporting me and pushing me to be the best that I can be on a daily basis. I am who I am because of them. Thank you all for doing the work you do. Together, we all play a part in making it happen. Thank you.
We do have District Two first, but, I'm sorry, we have Ms. Barbara Montgomery standing here right now. So we're gonna skip District Two. We're gonna not skip them completely. We're gonna come back. But we have the illustrious... If y'all don't know who she is, she's gonna tell us a little bit about it. But if I, in my career, Ms. Barbara, can do a fraction of what you've done for this city, then I will be successful. And I want to give you the honor.
Thank you. As you said earlier, I thank God for being here, for the journey that I have taken. I want to thank you, Carol. My councilperson for recognizing me. I want to thank the entire council for recognizing me. It's been a wonderful ride, and it still is. I, you know, I give my credit to some of my longtime friends, some of them who are here, some of them who have gone on, that worked with me throughout my life. When I came to Oakland, I didn't know anything about West Oakland, but I met such wonderful people that worked with me. And throughout my life, I have strived, since I've been in Oakland, to do the best that I can. I represent West Oakland, District Three, which I'm proud of. I'm proud of my councilperson. I am just proud of West Oakland from where it has been and where it is today. It hadn't been hard. It was easy, because I like to work in the community. I love my city. And if you love where you live, you do what you can to make it the best. I have worked under some of the most wonderful mayors here. I could name the ones that I worked under. Mayor Lionel Wilson, Elihu Harris, Jared Brown, the police, the police chiefs, and crime, and to help make Oakland what it is today. So I encourage you, as you see us standing here, to get involved and support your city, support your council, learn your councilpeople, and find out what's best for where you live. It has been a joy, it's still a joy. I'm a commissioner, my director is here, would you stand, from the Housing Authority? And her staff, my family is here, would you stand, my family, my friends? That have strived with me, that have worked with me, that have stayed home and brought me the meetings. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity during Black History Month to recognize me. And I haven't really given up. I'm still on several boards, still striving to make Oakland the best place that it can be. So get involved and come along with me, and let's help make Oakland be where it should be. Thank you.
District Four, let me have District Four.
Let's go back to District Two.
Two, District Two? Where's District Two? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yay. I have to hug this woman. Hi, on behalf of Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan in the District Two office, we are recognizing Tracy Williams. Who's already famous in Oakland. We want to acknowledge Tracy and her team back there from Urban University, which is, one of their locations is on Grand Avenue. They do an incredible amount of work with single mamas. Going out, housing, meaningful employment, with a brand-new e-commerce business called Shop. It's on Grand Avenue, right next to the resale store. So I'm gonna hand it over to Tracy to share more about what their work is.
Thank you, Deborah. You're a friend of ours. In the words of the great philosopher James Brown, "I am black and I am proud." Thank you to Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan, Deborah Israel, our friend, and thank you, councilmembers, for this beautiful honor. I personally stand on the shoulder of my parents and my grandparents and my great-grandparents who taught me how to love and to serve. It's an interesting time to receive this honor, as our world seems to retreat from justice and love. And I accept this honor on the behalf of those beautiful single mothers standing in the back of the room. My staff, Erica Hidley, my besties here from LA, Mario, Sandy, my partner, Orla. But most importantly, I'm glad you ladies are standing up, because I was going to ask you to do so. I want the city council to see you. I want them to see you. You are our North Star. You are pillars of love and resilience in your community. You are in close proximity to many of the social issues that are happening today. I consider you one of the most untapped superpowers in this community. And so I hope that this moment, standing here, inspires you not only to achieve those housing and employment opportunities and goals, but that you too will be a leader one day in this town. I love you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is an honor to be able to, on behalf of the District Four Council Office, present our Black History and Futures Month commendation to the one and only Rachel Wolf Goldsmith. Now, if you haven't met Rachel before, you have definitely seen her work and her presence around Oakland. The famous, the beautiful Woman of the Black Panther Party mural in West Oakland. The beautiful woman of African... Beautiful mural of African woman dancing at the side of the Tribune Tower. The mural of queer people right down Broadway. There is so much beauty and life that Rachel has injected into Oakland, and it's not only through her art. Apart from being the creative director of the Bay Area Mural Project, Rachel is an innovator. She has brought together NFTs and technology to combine with art, so that artists and creators here in Oakland can make a real living. She has done so much to put Oakland on the map for all the right reasons, including convening people, convening creators, artists, activists, and musicians, and more, right across from City Hall. You have Wolfpack Studios, which is a beautiful space, if you haven't checked out their new location, and using these spaces to make sure that we're continuing to create positive change and that we're celebrating beauty in Oakland. And for all of your contributions to putting Oakland on the map through art, through vibrance, through your physical art, and through your spirit, I'm proud to present our commendation.
Thank you. Wow, it is surreal to be here right now, being recognized. I'm extremely grateful for this moment, extremely grateful to be nominated by you for this honor, and, um, feeling blessed and humbled to be surrounded by my community here. Making murals, to me, is making a monument. And a lot of times, we don't have the same monuments that we see throughout history and throughout time, either due to colonization taking our monuments down, or due to us not having our own monuments that represent us. So to me, making murals is taking people that I know in my community, blowing them up to this monumental scale, where we are forced to look up to them. And to me, it's really important to bring into the fold images of people who are living, who are making change today, who are around us, to celebrate our history while it's being made, to honor people while they're living, so that they don't have to wait to die to see themselves honored. I think it's a beautiful thing to bring people together around art and creativity, because creativity is what feeds our ability to imagine the future, and to imagine where we're going, and to create a roadmap to share with other people. So I'm honored. I want to ask Langston Avery to stand up. This is my business partner at Wolfpack Studios. He's also the founder of Nigus in Nature, and he's fundamental to the success of Wolfpack Studios and to what we're creating right down the street. So come to his comedy show this Friday. We're cultivating spaces where we can laugh, and where we can dream about the future, and where we can empower other people and youth to do the same things, to stretch their imagination, to imagine the way that the Panthers imagined what Oakland could be like, what the world could be like, if we take care of each other and we move together as a pack and not as individuals. So thank you for this honor. Thank you to everyone who came before me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's, uh, well, let's go ahead and go District Seven, then we go.
Hello, everyone. This youngster, and I'm not saying this in a disrespectful way, I called him a pup, right? I'm so proud of him, of the things that he has done, and I'm not gonna say his name until the end. This young man is the son of two Oakland Unified District employees. He was born and raised in Oakland, East Oakland. He went to the OU SD schools and graduated from Oakland High School, went and attended Laney College and Alameda College, ultimately transferred to San Francisco State University, where he earned his BA in Urban Studies and Planning. After graduating from San Francisco State, he attended California State University, East Bay, earned his master's degree in Public Administration. He served as Director of Housing Justice Initiatives at United Way Bay Area. In 2020, he was elected to serve the Board of Trustees for Parata Community College. He advocated for students' housings and worked closely with his colleagues to ensure that the district students were able to navigate through the COVID pandemic. And he also orchestrated across sectors partnerships with Parata Community College in Oakland, a community-based organization, to enhance educational opportunities for the students served by the college. He was the past president of California Association of Black Student Educators, a former member of the Alameda County Public Health Commissioners, elected to the council representing District Six in November 2022. He was elected by his colleagues to serve as City Council President, November the 6th of this year. Following his election as president, I'm gonna say his name now, Kevin Jenkins stepped away from City Council and assumed the office of the interim mayor, where he serves and represents all Oaklanders and navigate the city through many challenges that it faces. Kevin is firmly rooted, firmly rooted, in Oakland. And I'm proud, he's a proud father of Elijah, a second-generational Oaklander. And Kevin, I'm gonna say this to you. I'm proud of you, man. I'm your senior, but I'm bound down to you on this level, and I appreciate everything that you are doing for this city, and you stepping up. You're gonna be a hard act to follow. So come on up here, big man.
So, people won't realize this about me. My chief of staff will tell you, I do not like being celebrated, but I really do appreciate the honor. An Oaklander just like Ken. So I never wanted to run for City Council. I never wanted to be in elected office. I wanted to be a sports agent. Came to the city of Oakland, and I wanted to be a planner. I went to school for planning, I got my degree in planning, and I thought I was gonna be a planner. So I came to the city of Oakland, and I wanted an internship. And so they told me that I did not have enough experience to be an intern, and that's why I'm mayor here today. Thanks, Ken Houston, I appreciate it.
Proud of you, man.
Right, and so, hello, everyone. Happy Black History Month. This has just been so beautiful. Thank you, Councilmember Five, for leading us in organizing this beautiful occasion. And so now I get the amazing opportunity to honor an amazing organization situated right here in the town, and that is Hack the Hood, led by Executive Director Samya Zubar. Please join me. And so for those of you who may or may not know, Hack the Hood is an important organization for our Black youth in Oakland. We often say that youth are the future, and Hack the Hood is a shining example of what it means to put that into practice. Their programs have become a critical part of our personal and professional development infrastructure for our youth. And as you all know, that the Bay Area is genuinely the tech hub of our communities. And so we know that oftentimes, Black and Brown students do not get equitable opportunity in the tech space. And so Hack the Hood is literally leading in this space for our young people, providing laptops, critical programs, so that they can have access to an industry that is the future for our young people. And so just want to make some space for their executive director. I know the team is here as well. Feel free to join us to just kind of talk a little bit more about the amazing program that you all are offering, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Rowena, for this amazing honor, Mayor Jenkins, the city council for this opportunity. It is beyond exciting to be recognized amongst such amazing organizations and people that are doing great things here for Oakland. We serve Black, Latinx, Indigenous, and AAPI youth, as Rowena shared, to create access and opportunities to the tech sector. I'm born and raised in San Francisco. I lived in Oakland for a bit. We're a program that serves Oakland, Alameda County, and really the greater Bay Area. As someone who was born and raised here, I have seen gentrification displacement and the movement with the tech industry and this workforce. And it's really important work to us to ensure that the folks that are from here have the opportunity to be a part of these places and spaces if they so choose. So I'm really grateful to be in a position where I get to lead an organization doing impactful work like this, and working alongside everyone in this room to ensure that we're providing real opportunities for our youth. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to go next? Kevin, come on.
So first, I want to thank Councilmember Five, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Houston, Lanice Jones, for helping to work on this. Did I forget anybody? Yeah, for helping to work on putting this together. So my honoree as mayor of Oakland is Supervisor Nate Miley. Supervisor Nate Miley has long been a champion of all things Oakland. He came to Oakland in the 80s and served on council from 1990 to 2000 in District Six. After that, he was elected to the Alameda County Board of Supervisors. And in that, he's been fighting for Oakland, pushed him to fight a little harder for Oakland. And there's always more that we can do. And K-Top, I believe, we have a video, because Supervisor Miley is in New Orleans right now. He wanted to be here, but I recorded a video.
For your service to the Oakland community, you've been doing work in Oakland for a long time, and nobody will say how long it's been, but we appreciate you, serving as councilmembers, serving as our supervisor. And in between that time, you've done a number of good things that have benefited the residents of Oakland, so we want to honor you for Black History Month.
Well, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate the interim mayor, Jenkins, and my good friend Kenny Houston here, who's on the city council, for presenting this to me and recognizing me for my time on the city council. Ten years there, and 24 years here as a county supervisor, longtime resident of the city. I know Kevin's doing a great job bringing the city back. I knew it took Kenny getting on the council to get Kevin to start, you know, making things happen. And it really took Kevin getting to the mayor's seat. He's doing a great job. And I just want to say, you know, Black history is our history. It's the history of this country. You know, we belong, we deserve, and we've benefited, as well as the country has benefited from us being here. So the thing is, I want us to keep the struggle alive. I want us to keep on fighting. I want us to keep holding our heads high and being proud. Keep the faith, because we're gonna make it happen. So once again, thank you, Mayor Jenkins. Thank you, Councilmember Houston, for this great honor.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. Is Pastor Joseph Cotton present? Come on up. Come on up. Come on up, Pastor. District Five is honored to recognize Pastor Bishop Bob Jackson from Ex-Full Gospel Church here in Oakland, California. And Pastor, Assistant Pastor Joseph Cotton is a member, a leader with Ex-Full Gospel Church. And let me just take a minute to read. Whereas District Five proudly honors Bishop Bob Jackson, a devoted husband, father, grandfather, revered pastor, spiritual leader, and dedicated community advocate, whose unwavering commitment to ministry, leadership, and service has profoundly shaped Oakland. As the founder and senior pastor of a Ex-Full Gospel Church established in 1984 with a small group of dedicated group of dedicated believers, Bishop Bob Jackson led his remarkable growth into one of the largest and most vibrant congregations in the region. Beyond the pulpit, he has dedicated his life to the uplifting, the marginalized, and underserved, spearheading initiatives such as food distribution programs for families in need, a prison ministry offering hope and redemption to incarcerated individuals, and housing and employment programs supporting those experiencing homelessness or financial hardship. And Pastor Bishop Bob Jackson is one that I've known for a lifetime. I still remember going to Bible class, and he's the one that if you needed an attitude adjustment, he would give it to you. But I'm extremely grateful for his support. It's one of the reasons why I'm here. I even ran for reelection, because Bishop Bob Jackson wanted me to be sure I'd get back until we get Oakland to where it used to be. So with that, if you can say a couple of words for us regarding Bishop Bob Jackson.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm glad to be here to represent Bishop Bob Jackson. As he gets a little bit older, you know, he experiences a little bit of challenges. He probably wouldn't want me to tell all of y'all that. But I'm here to try to pick up the slack. But he's honored, he's very grateful and thankful for you guys to recognize him. One thing, if you know Bishop Bob Jackson, is that he loves the city of Oakland, and he campaigns for the city of Oakland. He don't take the crime and things to happen in the city lightly. If you have to go to Sacramento or wherever, he's calling anybody to be able to help, to take care of the city of Oakland. And so he's honored to receive this award, and I'm just here to fill in, just to say thank you, and represent him, and allow him also to be able to get a little bit of rest, because we still have a lot of work to do to make the city great. Amen.
So I'm going to allow for 10 seconds for anybody that wants to take pictures with their honorees and their family members to get up here. You've got 10 seconds, so we can take a group picture before we wrap up this ceremony. So if you have an honoree, a family member, a colleague, come up. These faces are great, by the way. Please come up here, so there's not going to be anybody left in the gallery to take the picture. But you'll be on K-Top, so come on. Yeah. Yeah, he can come too. Okay. Last but not least, last but not least, come stand next to me, young man. We have an amazing vocalist. Y'all, simmer down now. Simmer down. You all, I want you all to give your attention to the center of the room, because we have an amazing young vocalist who's a student at the Oakland School of the Arts, who was supposed to start off this program today, but I did not want anyone to leave without hearing the vocals of, he's saying thank you, I'm not even finished with my statement, of Raylan. He is an amazing student, but we are so blessed to have his song today. So he's going to sing the National Anthem, the Negro Anthem.
Can we please stand? Can we please stand? Ready? Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with all harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling seas. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the presence has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, beater the chasening rod. Felt in the days when hope unborn had died, yet with a steady beat have not our weary feet come to the place for which our father sigh. We have come. That with tears have been. Come on, help me sing it, y'all. We, come on. Treading our path to the blood slot. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last, where the wake gleam of our bright star is cast. Thank you so much.
We do have a few speakers on this.